I did see it in advance. I was like, I want to try to hear. And somebody else was hoping, I was like, I can't just go over there and ask.
He wants to look to be like straight and say in the work first. Like, oh, he's not in, um, community college. He works in, um, he works in ITU, um, uh, second support down in Benham, but he's our super.
I'm just, you take care of my parents' kids.
I'd like to call a special meeting on North Huntington Township Commissioners for Thursday, December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven oh seven PM. Order, we'll call.
Commissioner Harold, Commissioner Higas, Commissioner Bertani.
Here.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Fessenda.
Here.
Commissioner Casterum.
Here.
Commissioner Martino.
Here.
Everybody please rise to the place of allegiance. I place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first time on the attendance is citizen input. First citizen's input is David Lewinsky. The only thing I request is, you know, we've had a lot of citizen input concerning, concerning Efnor and the plan. So if there's some, the commissioners have not had an opportunity to voice their opinion yet. So if there's any new faces or anything new that people would like to bring up to us, please come up to a podium and talk about it. But we're going to try to, please, if you have it, please keep it short. We appreciate it.
I'll, I'll, I'll do my very best.
Thank you.
My wife will tell you that's unlikely success. I won't, I honor this request and not reiterate my many concerns about safety and congestion and the road's general state. It's been stated many times and anybody that's driven the road knows it. The additional things I'd like to bring up with this, first of all, to the interest of the public in general, there were Facebook posts made about this topic just forty-eight hours ago. No big mystery, I made them. There was one on the North Huntington Memories and the other on All About Norwood. In less than forty-eight hours, these two posts attracted sixty-seven unique individuals. And both of these post sites, by the way, being a resident is part of the, you know, membership criteria. Sixty-seven individuals, a hundred and fifty-three separate commentaries. And the two things I would like to point out is that virtually all of them were negative about this zoning variance. Those that weren't negative, however, and I fought against this, and I continue to, were cynical about ever stopping any development. There were probably about a hundred and twenty-five people that said, come on, we don't need more high-density housing. But then there were a lot that said, why even bother? Why are you wasting your time? I don't buy that. I believe that the commissioners are sincere. I believe that you understand your charge to balance the needs between development and the concerns of the residents for safety and property values and quality of life. I'm not cynical about this at all. But I think it's worth the time of the commissioners to go and check out those websites, read that feedback. These are the people that you represent, in addition to the people that are here tonight that have their concerns. Another thing that I think is worthy of consideration is this question that was obliquely raised about whether there have been any serious traffic studies done about this. Congestion is really critical. I don't know whether the developers have done theirs, but they're captive consultant if they have, and they're obviously paid to find certain results. I think it would be an excellent use of township money to have an independent party evaluate traffic load, evaluate the road for safety and danger, and give an independent report. And I, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll be one of the first ones. If you find a neutral, independent party that will say this will have minimal effect, I will accept that. I will. But I'd really like to see it done because I think it's, you may find that when someone that really is knowledgeable evaluates this situation, it will not be in support of forty-four houses and carload. Last but not least, there is an important issue here, which is whatever is decided on this variance is going to set a precedent. There's plenty of other undeveloped land that is owned by individuals, and as we've said, every legitimate right to develop this property. I am not a never have an anti-development, but I think you have to own what you buy. And I will tell you, if this variance is granted and this, this change that doesn't benefit the residents, one iota, it benefits one person a lot. The gentleman that owns the land across the street, he'll be the next one in here. And why are you going to say, well, we, we gave a variance there, but we're not going to give it to you? Well, that might be a lawsuit. So what's happening here is opening up the potential for very large tracts of open land. Currently, it's known R three, and I for one would not mind building beautiful houses in there to maintain property values, quality of life, increase the quality of life in North Huntington Township. But I don't see how you could vote positively on this for the enrichment of one individual to the detriment of the citizens in the road. And when the next person comes along, and it might not be twenty-six acres, it might be fifty-six or a hundred and fifty-six, and they're going to say, well, why would I be prejudiced? You changed from R three to PRD, from single family to high density for this gentleman, and why not me? And I think if you look at all the green space in this township, and there's precious little of it, honestly, I would not want to see, and I think your citizens through and through this township, if you said there's a high likelihood that the precedent of making this change would then cause every other last person, and why not squeeze the many houses on, maximize their personal profits, all right? But they don't have to live with it, they have consequences, and the citizens do. I think that your interest of supporting the community and balancing these interests, I think you take it seriously. And I think you have to take seriously not just this one decision and this one road, but even if you decide that the residents of Efnor Road, their interest is thrown out the way Mr. Pascarelli's, I think you have to consider all the other people that are going to be trooping in here and wanting to ask the very same thing of you, and what it will mean to this township if a lot of the open space we have now similarly gets compelled to be high-density housing. And will that be the community that we really want to live in and abuse? I thank you for your attention. I know you've been very patient with me in the past, and I've had lots of complaints about this variance issue, and I will continue to passionately fight for it. We retained an attorney, I think everybody knows that, you've received a letter, to represent the road, and I'm the individual that has hired him. But we will continue to pursue this. This is our quality of life. I've lived on this road since nineteen sixty-one. My daughter's here tonight, and I hope she's living on it fifty-five, sixty years from now, and my brain picks two someday. We understand development's going to occur, we understand that. But please take into account not only the citizens, but also what this will mean to every other person that's going to stand in front of you and request this same kind of variance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen is Donito Pascarelli.
Donato.
Donato, excuse me, sir.
I would suggest that if we're going to get into the substantive discussion about the rezoning request, we wait until that comes up on the agenda.
Okay.
And I think it should be a tennis match back and forth.
Okay, so we're going to wait?
We have, we'll bring that up when we get to this. This is on the agenda, is item F. We'll do that.
We'll be given the opportunity when the subject comes up. Right now, we're just going to take citizens in.
Next citizen is Dan Mornick.
I agree with David Lewinsky on all counts, and I'd like to add that I too would like to see this day, assuming that it is. But the thing I have to say tonight is, at the end of our road there, we tried to get on to Warren's Lake, it's getting, well, it has been, but it's getting much worse. And I was wondering if we could have a couple of signs put up that say, do not block intersection, and that stop sign on Wendell Road backed all the way up to the barn beyond, give us a chance. People come up where they, they ignore you, and you have to sit there and sit there. It gets pretty ugly sometimes, in my mind. So anyway, if you can take that into consideration for the moment, I have something done, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Our next citizen is Roger Gethen.
We've lived on Efnor Road since nineteen seventy-eight, raised my kids there. Relatively safe place, the road itself was a gopath. It took us from then till now to get it paved once, a lot of old paths here and there. So you've heard all the deals about the narrow dangers road, about the poor drainage, you know, blind curves, et cetera. And I'm afraid that if you changes them the way it sounds like they wish to change it, we're going to, people that bought their homes, single-family homes that moved out there for the quality of life, we're going to change us to a middle-class salon, and I just would hate to see it.
Thank you, sir. Next one is Nicole Delvier.
Delve.
Delve.
I've been used to it. So what I would like to say on behalf of my fellow neighbors, David Lewinsky, Dan Mornick, and Roger Deemy, I have the same feelings that they do about the rezoning of Efnor Road. I have lived on there most of my entire life, my whole family's been on there, and to change this zoning to high density, that won't necessarily improve the road, as we've seen through all the discussions they made. Just forcing people onto that road, that won't necessarily make it better. And again, as my uncle David said, I'm not against the development of it, it's just changing it to high density is going to cause an issue, and I see that as an issue as a resident on Efnor Road. Thank you.
Nicole, could you give me your address also, please?
Thank you. Twenty forty Efnor Road.
Okay, thank you. Next one, Paul Beyondi. Name and address, correct, please.
My name is Paul J. Beyondi the third. I make that statement because my dad, Paul J. Beyondi Junior, started Grandview Nurseries nineteen sixty-eight on Efnor Road. And I, we, I originally grew up here in Huntington Heights, so I know what it, what it feels like to grow up and plant a home. And my dad was looking for property for many years to start a nursery, a family business, and it wasn't much area. We were looking at mom pleasantries, but we find this place on Efnor Road, and we moved there in nineteen sixty-eight, and it was zoned for farming agriculture. We had a successful nursery business, which you probably all know, Grandview Nurseries. So I, and I grew up in the country, I love the country living, that's why I lived there. I like to plant and garden, plow the ground. And one thing, it's not only the, the extra traffic that will come from the new housing, but what I've noticed over the last fifteen years, people find that Efnor Road is a shortcut from Rilton, Hermonie, Sudersville area, they use Efnor Road to cross over to Warren's Lake Road, it's a shortcut. So the privacy that we had, that I grew up with, you know, now they know that's a shortcut, so this would even increase more. And I, you know, we moved out there because it was zoned for, and I don't want to see the zoning changed. I like the country living, I don't want to see a change. I love Efnor Road, I love the country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next gentleman, Steve Koche. Name and address, correct, please.
Two nine two one Efnor Road. My name is Steve Koche, K-O-C-H-I-S. There's not much I can add to what I already heard, except that if Mr. Pascarelli had built his house, just like his house, single homes out there, I would welcome him and shake his hand for it. But if he wants to go single family, family home, I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next one is, you know, Stradakis.
Hi, I'm Arnie Stradakis, I live on thirteen seventy-one Hemlock Drive. And, you know, I, I'm listening with concern with some of the things that are going on, but one of the things that I've heard that I just wanted to see if there was anything about changing the traffic pattern from this current plan into, from the current plan on Hemlock Drive into the Efnor Road plan. So I was concerned about any lots being changed and where we are now. Okay, all right, to just hope, you know, was just concerned about that. Okay, and, you know, and, you know, I like the Pascarelli family so much, you know, we just wanted to come here to just express that concern of the traffic pattern that could be coming in, you know, our way, and hopefully that won't happen. Okay, so hopefully not. I am concerned just with, you know, the road being paved and Hemlock Drive, you know, speed maintained, keeping up the quality, you know, of the area, and definitely I am concerned about the residents on Efnor Road, but I'm sure you'll do what you need to do to make sure that you can make a good decision. I agree, Mr. Lewinsky, about that.
Okay, thank you. Next citizen is Mary Beth Sorensen.
Yes, one S, Sorensen. Thank you for hearing me, I'm at thirteen ninety-three Hemlock Drive, and I'm a lifelong resident of North Huntington Township. My heart is here, I went away for college, but I can return, and I've lived ever since. I grew up, in some sense, on the Beyondi farm, because I was best friends with Toraine, and I want to speak to the environmental and the beauty of our township, and how keeping it as green as possible is in the best interest of everyone who loves North Huntington Township. And I would urge you to protect our green space. It is once gone, never, ever gotten back, and so I would urge you to allow bigger lots and greener trees and grass, because I think that's part of the quality of life that we love so much about this township. And I trust that all of our commissioners are committed to that goal of the best possible township that we can have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next citizen is Richard Forsythe.
I present the two homes in North Huntington Township.
Name and address, correct, please.
Thirteen forty-five Hemlock Drive and sixteen forty Clay Pike, they're both. I was concerned about a rumor that the road could connect to Hemlock Drive. That's been answered, as long as that doesn't happen. I am going against development in any way, I was on the planning mission, like I said the last time, for sixteen years, so I'm not anti-develop. However, I am there to protect myself and the residents of Hemlock Drive. I'm the one that's going to look at a twelve-foot-high cul-de-sac in my backyard, because that's what it's going to have to be to drain the, the properties. So I am concerned. You know, the residents there, some of them are here, some of them are not here, when you're looking at developments that's going to create a twelve-foot-high cul-de-sac, and that's just why I cite the development, cite the elevations to drain that cul-de-sac, because if I live right at the end of a valley, so I am concerned, and you would be concerned if you lived at the bottom. I have a lot of hopes of development as long as it's put in correctly, and as long as that road doesn't connect to Hemlock Drive. I just thank you for your time, have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen is Dennis Seven. Name and address, correct, please.
Dennis Seven, SCB IN, I'm at thirteen forty-two White Oak Court, Wrenna Drive, which is in the Wrenna State's plan. We built that house about eight years, nine years ago now, and, you know, we've bought the property in question here, and I, I find that the development of that is a positive thing. I mean, it's sort of slashing, you know, the trees fall down a lot, there is just kind of an area that I mean, there's something to be done. And I look at the plan that's proposed, and you know, I've known Dan for a long time, and I trust what he's telling me, and it looks, looks great. I have in-laws that moved into the plan at Pointe Vista, looking exactly for that type of housing for that reason, but didn't have a good lot, didn't have a big yard, it was still a very nice home. These are lots of small, little tract homes that he's talking about, so I'm really supportive of what he's trying to do here, and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Next citizen is Joe Coghill. Take your name and address, correct, please.
I'm Joe Coghill, thirteen fifty-six Hemlock Drive. My main concern is a safety issue for the residents of North Huntington. Warren's Lake Road is a farm road. They're putting a new plan in across the street, the Ryanhome Plan. Maybe, what, a tenth of the residents are in, not even, and I'm seeing a lot of traffic, increased traffic on Warren's Lake Road. Warren's Lake Road can't handle the high volume, just can't handle the high volume of traffic, and my question is, what are you going to do about Warren's Lake Road if all this development's happening? We've got to, something's got to be done. It's, it's falling in, the sides are falling in, there's ditches and valleys, it's a mess. It's just going to create more of a mess if you get more traffic in there. So I don't think you guys have anything planned for at least the next five years, from what I understand. So, you know, you've got to come up with the money to fix the road, that's my favorite. Safety is a big issue, lots of kids running around the neighborhood, and some people walk up and down Warren's Lake Road, and, you know, you know, widen the road or something, figure something out, because it's becoming a safety hazard. And there's a lot of people to speed on that road, too. I wish some cops would sit more often on that road, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our last citizen is Gary Hitchens.
I know. My name is Gary Hitchens, I live at one one two zero five Burke's Lane. I used to live in North Huntington, or, excuse me, I used to live in Swirfield Township, and as Dan said, Efnor Road is used as a pass-through between North Huntington and Swirfield Township. To add forty-four homes, eight To add forty-four homes, eighty to ninety cars to that, and then, as somebody else mentioned, a backup on Berkers Lane, or on, uh, Barnes Lake Road already, that's a catastrophe. A catastrophe waiting to happen. So I urge you to consider that in your, I also would like to say that journey was passed for a reason and this session was designated as saving family homes for a reason when it was passed. Development for develop, excuse me, development for development's sake is not always a good thing. Okay?
Thank you. That's our last citizens for the evening. I think the commissioners will probably hold all their comments until, uh, we get to the planning and engineering topics, which will be, um, discussion on Eppner Road. Rather than take other, um, citizen input and comprehensive park plan update.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jason Livingston. Uh, work for Environmental Planning and Design. Um, I know some of you already, we, uh, we presented to you guys, uh, I think in August. Presented what we had, what we had obtained from the public survey. Um, we've gone through the online survey, set some public, had two public meetings in this room. Um, and that all is leading to the comps, park rec, multiple space plan update. Um, I believe you gentlemen have received the draft of that. Um, so at that point, at this point, it is a draft. We want to get your feedback. Uh, so that, that's why I'm here tonight. I want to, um, throw some ideas out at you guys and, um, start, start getting a dialogue and get you guys thinking about what we've heard and what we're presenting. Times of the essence, so it won't take very long. Up on the screen, we'll go very quickly. I've just picked up some pieces from the report, um, if you can go to the next page. Um, way up front is an executive summary and, and that is really kind of a snapshot of what the report is. There's going to be a list of recommendations right up front, um, so that you get an idea of what you're going to be seeing throughout the pages in the report. Um, quick, quick look at the, some of the findings from the public survey. We had twelve, eleven questions, the twelfth question was an open-ended item. So you'll see in the report, all eleven, uh, all eleven questions and their results and, um, a quick sort of analysis of each of those questions and answers. Um, if you go to the next slide, we visited every park, um, and we have, once getting the report, it's a, it's a first blush look at each park, a quick inventory, um, some observations, and then in the actual plan in the back, there are just some really kind of high-level recommendations for each park. You can go to the next one. Um, so we, we met and, uh, we've been working very closely with Mike and Dan. Um, we wanted to create a, a priority projects list. Um, now, with that being said, in the update, we have roughly thirty recommendations. Um, and they're, they're going to range in size, complexity, um, and then what it's going to do for the township. But we do have seven, what we can call them, seven priority projects, and we've lumped them together. Um, so if you take a look, what we've heard from the sports groups, from the public, uh, and what we've seen and heard, that there's probably a need for some additional ball fields. Uh, now, lots easy to say, okay, we need new ball fields, let's go out and build new ball fields. It, it's just not that simple. There's thinking that's to be done. Um, so a recommendation that's come out of this is adding lighting, um, adding some athletic type lighting, big lighting for some selected parks. Um, we've chosen really three at this point that we feel are appropriate. Um, there's probably two other ones that, um, with some more thinking, probably makes sense. Um, lighting is a good candidate. It's done fairly quickly, you know, if you're building for about the same price as a new ball field with lighting, um, it's done in a much shorter time. You can get the lighting installed, you know, in, in three to six months as opposed to two years, whenever you have to build a ball field, ball field has to rest until you play on it. So adding the lighting really extends that usability of the parks. So we're looking at, uh, O'Callow, uh, West Penn and Penn's Woods right now as sort of the, the high, you know, the, the highest candidates for those light, for that light. Um, so that's one. We're also recommending two master plans being done. One master plan for Lions Park. Um, Lions Park is, uh, is a fairly underutilized space right now and has, has a lot of potential. Uh, what that potential can be is really kind of up to that master plan. The master plan study is going to suss out whether or not there should be ball fields there or if it's better served to be a passive park, uh, for a dog park, a bigger playground, um, those kind of activities, not something like a ball field where it requires a lot of parking lots and, and, um, you know, that kind of activity. So, so that's the master plan for, for Lions. Uh, master plan for O'Callow. Um, we've heard throughout this, this process, uh, O'Callow, while it, you know, right now, uh, it's, it's a wonderful park, it really is. It gives everybody in the township a little bit of something. Whenever, what we've been hearing, whenever folks are looking at neighbors and what they have, uh, there's a lot of parks that are, are purely athletic complexes. Um, if that's something that the township desires, this might be the spot. Uh, that's, that's going to come out of the master plan, too. We can't really say right now that that makes sense because there's a lot of studies that need to have, to happen, to make sure that makes sense. Um, two feasibility studies. We've got, we've heard that folks want a, a community center, indoor community center, and some sort of water recreation. If it's a swimming pool or a splash pad, splash park. Um, now, we, we do know that there was feasibility study already done for Rec Center. We feel that if it's revisited, there's a, a new avenue that can be explored where the, the, this facility is a little bit more feasible, something, um, a little more realistic. We've, you know, there seems like there needs to be a better give and take and, and understanding what the real issues are to present something that's feasible. Um, so the swimming pool, splash pad, splash park, uh, another feasibility studies, it's probably a little bit less contentious, um, and it's really finding the right spot and the right use for that facility. Um, the last two projects are, are really sort of town, township-wide initiatives. Um, the, the top, top thing that the public is looking for, that we, we learned from the survey, are trails. Um, trail, like cave trails, a trail system. So there's two avenues we're, we're thinking about and we're presenting. One is more of a regional, uh, park plan, master plan. Uh, at first, we were thinking it could be a township-wide study of what this trail system could be. And then, uh, we met not too long ago with Jeff and, and Mike and Dan, um, and maybe there's a way to think about it as a mobility district, uh, breaking the township into some smaller pieces and there's a, a trail system within that mobility district. Um, the second leg of that trail system plan, uh, are trails within the parks right now. Now, Indian Lake, of course, has some wonderful trail system, uh, right now. Brax, uh, Trail has a great trail system. Two candidates for additional trails would be O'Callow. Uh, we could really see and heard, a per, a perimeter trail around O'Callow makes a lot of sense. Um, and Hilltop Park. Hilltop Park seemed to be, uh, a sort of an untapped resource. Uh, there's a lot there, it's wooded. Um, I think there's some trails there currently, you know, they're, they're not even glazed, they're a little bit unofficial trails. Uh, so it seems like it's a likely candidate for that. Um, the last initiative would be creating a marketing campaign per se of the cultural and historical resources that are already in the township. Um, Mike had brought up that, you know, Route Thirty, uh, has a really rich history and, and there's a lot of, a lot of people who would be willing to come and, and visit North Huntington to learn about that district. Um, so it's really, it's a marketing, a branding thing to, to get more people into the township. Um, go to the next one. Let's see. Next one, I think that might be a good one. And then, so in the report, there's a couple pages that, that capsulate each one of those projects, gives you a, a snapshot of what this project is, timeframes for, uh, your design, engineering, consulting, uh, a construction timeframe and a construction budget and a consulting budget. So if you take all those aspects, put them together, um, there needs to be now more conversation about how the board sees those priorities being shifted and ranked and how that plays out over the next, you know, three years, five years, ten years. At this point, the report i- is meant to be an instrument for you guys to make good decisions. Um, and, and everything that's in the report, you know, comes from, uh, the folks, from the township, uh, from the staff, from EPD, uh, and our key person in it. So, uh, with that, I'd like to hear what you guys think about the recommendations. Are we off base or are we missing something? Uh, something really excites you? Uh, it's up to you guys.
Okay, I'll start.
Great.
Um, the one thing that excites me is, is the, the Lions Park looking at Lions Park. I think it's basically definitely underutilized there, though I do have some serious concerns over stormwater management.
Absolutely.
That is a, a major issue, um, with that, that area down there. And I grew up right up the road from Lions Park, so I spent a lot of time there as a kid.
Sure.
And it does turn into a swamp, so I, I'd be really, really curious to see how you plan on dealing with that, uh, the water runoff from, because it basically sits in a hole.
Right.
It's the lowest part there.
Right.
Um, it, I mean, you can probably dig a hole there and, and after rain, it'd be a lake. Um, so I, I, I'd be interested in seeing the master plan and how you, how you would do that, but I definitely think it's underutilized space and I would really like to see that space used and, and especially, maybe not as much as a ball field, but as, you know, some of the other activities you identified in your plan as.
Yeah.
The dog park especially, I think that'd be a great place for a dog park.
Yeah, yeah, we do, too. There could be a really neat space for, for folks that they're looking for, uh, you know, the more paths that they're looking to throw a ball.
So I, I, I think you have a lot of work to do as far as stormwater management. I'm sure Dan, you probably agree with that.
I agree. Something, we, that's something we've seen, we utilize a lot in the parks now in any project we do. Um, a buzzword is green infrastructure and the green infrastructure is really allowing plants and regrading and, and special soils to take the water. Uh, so we would, it has its own way to go, but this water comes off of the, the slope, that's primarily where it's coming from, the development on top. We can create, or a consultant can create really beautiful amenities, um, that collect that water. It's a special kind of planting, if, if that, once again, if that park is more of a passive thing where wildflowers, you know, meadow kind of a thing, it makes sense there. If it's right into that, that program where we collect the water before it gets into the usable space, it collects, it infiltrates back into the ground, or there's a conveying system. I mean, likely there's already, um, right on the head wall there, there's already, you know, there's a, a facility in plan right now, so, agreed. Dealing with it is the big thing.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see the plan of, so I, I'll, I'll deal with that. So when I were told to rule out, it's, I'll talk about letting foot, yeah, I mean, it's pretty, there's a lot, a lot of space there.
There is. Parking would be a big.
Parking would be, yeah.
It's a balance.
Because it used to be a ball field there.
Right.
I played my first baseball game at that time.
Right.
Absolutely. And I'm also, the, the hiking bike controls, yeah, that's, yeah. I think that's a big one.
That was a big item for the, for the public.
I did want to ask you, how much extension of playtime for the fields is actually feasible with the lights?
Sure, sure. Uh, summertime, you know, less, of course, you know, since the sun goes down at eight thirty, nine o'clock, but there's really a spring and fall times, uh, you can gather two or three hours a day, um, which is essentially probably, you know, one, two practices and a game. Um, and if you add that up over the facilities that we're talking about, uh, it, it accounts for quite, quite a lot.
And another thing I wanted to ask is, um, O'Callow needs infrastructure.
Hmm, yeah.
Uh, if you're going to put lights on a field up, up on the upper part of O'Callow.
Yeah.
You need another comfort station.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think the sewage that we have, the system that we have there now is, um, it doesn't work for them.
Agreed.
Uh, so it needs a lot of infrastructure before we put in lights.
Sure, sure.
So I'm concerned about that. And also, I don't see no public, um, business, uh, businesses that should have opportunities like other townships and boroughs have done, getting together with businesses to build some of that stuff.
The formal partnership?
Right.
Public-private partnership. Uh, that's something that we, we've talked about, um, and certainly something that could be explored. Uh, but we touched on it, you know, briefly and, um, those, those are fairly unique circumstances. Uh, you've got to find the right person and, um, definitely not something that shouldn't be ruled out, but it's a, it's a hard one.
Something we don't know the answer to until we ask.
Right, absolutely. And if, with some of these initiatives, um, you know, if you get a couple of these balls rolling and, and some of these folks see something happening in the township, it makes that conversation a lot easier.
I mean, uh, police athletically, POW, they use banners in the outfield for advertisement. And they sell, uh, if we build a dog park, I'm sure we could do the same thing with rumors in the area, fat land.
Yeah. Yeah, agreed.
It can end up paying for pieces of fence.
Yeah, hundred percent. I agree.
Right, uh, you had said about lighting in parks, and you stated three parks. I missed one of them, O'Callow and Penn's Woods, what was it there?
Uh, Westmoreland City.
Westmoreland City. Okay. And you also said about, in your report, as far as natural buffers. Where would the natural buffers be at Penn's Woods and Westmoreland City?
Yeah, it, that was a criteria, oh, excuse me, this was, that's kind of a high-level study, so that was a criteria we felt that made a lot of sense that would lend itself to a park. Um, we did present a couple other parks. We presented two other parks at the second public meeting. Um, we actually thought Hilltop might be a candidate because of that natural buffer and Tinker's, if it runs, we thought maybe those would be good candidates because of that natural buffer. Um, when we presented it, uh, there were representatives from the NCAA, uh, who quickly asked us why. Um, they don't really use those parks very much. And there's, there's issues with the, the parks, the parking, um, you know, the parking at, at Tinker's, the size of the field at Hilltop. Um, Westmoreland City and Penn's Woods are two that they use quite a lot and would expect to use even more. Um, and so, going back and thinking about it, the lighting now, you know, the lighting currently, uh, is, is not the lighting that, you know, when a ride's played on a baseball field, it's a lot different. The technology, um, is, is so much more advanced now that it, it's pretty much a zero line, you know, zero, uh, darkness line. They can, they can shed that or they can shut the light off pretty much wherever they need to. So we were worried about the flood, you know, the, the flood of light on the neighbors. Um, the technology and the engineering of the lights now, uh, it's a concern, of course. You know, if you're in your, you know, second-story bedroom, you're, you're going to see a light. So those are things that need to be thought about, though, with those two parks.
Yeah, because both of them have very low houses.
Absolutely.
There again, uh, you know, it's not like O'Callow, we have a lot of parking. You know, none of the other parks, as far as, uh, um, Hilltop doesn't have a lot of parking, Tinker's doesn't have a ton of parking, Penn's Woods doesn't have a lot of parking. I've been down there, I've seen when they had NCAA games, their park all down, uh, actually State Road.
Right.
Which in twenty-seven, they parked a little. Um, so the length in their day of play, uh, I'm, I'm just not sure about that.
I've read over the book and I think you did a fantastic commentary on that. I think it would really be great for decisions at a time to ban pretty quickly for a lot of this stuff to get implemented. The question I have is, in the back of the book, you have an action plan, short term. What's your short term, to this year, next year?
Short term is really that three-year range, three to five-year range. Short term is the one to three-year, midterm is probably more the three to five to seven year, then long-term would be ten years.
Okay, a lot of the stuff we talked about is, because this is what Wayne was talking about, is lighting. Are there grants out there that we might be able to appropriate for doing even a lot of the other stuff that we're looking at?
Right, absolutely. There are grants and programs within the utility companies. A lot of times, you know, Duquesne Lighting will provide you with the ballast, you have to put up the bowls and the foundations. I live in Brentwood and we utilize that program, like family gave the brand of lights, if you've got to do bowls and the foundations.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Kind of catch on with, I guess, a lot of those comments and, you know, I appreciate the report, obviously all the assistance input that, you know, got involved. Just looking at all the parks in general, I know it keeps coming up about parking. I don't know, you might have mentioned it a few different times, I mean, we don't really have the current infrastructure just for the parking. That's really the thing that we need to address before I think we would even look at any of these topics. Like if you had the lighting at one of the ball fields or parks that we currently got, if we don't address the parking firsthand, we're just asking for more trouble down the road with cars parked on streets, maybe there aren't, shouldn't be, or cars parked in front of residence homes that obviously don't let a bunch of cars park there regularly, let alone having two or three more hours down the road. I think one of the major concerns we do here is recreational fields and I think a lot of that's more forward towards the destination parks. You know, they're not letting children go down the street and play at the neighborhood park anymore, they're driving their kid to the destination park where they're going to play at the field for maybe a game and they're watching their brother play or sister play. So I think if we do take a look at that actions of putting lights at the field, we might need to actually invest in infrastructure as far as parking, lighting, or as Mike said about, you know, restroom facilities or, you know, things that, before you actually get to that point to take a look at that.
Yeah. I disagree, there's more thinking than just saying, we're going to put up three lights and then we walk away, but there's, yeah.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Our next item, well, again, tonight is a work session discussion item, and we're so.
Okay, the first item is a new position that we've labeled a communication and technology coordinator. Through the budget discussions for 2018, there was discussion from the board to possibly create a cross-partemental position to aid in our communication and technology implementation and deployment. And what we've done as an administrative staff, is we kind of brainstormed through, did multiple drafts of a job description for this position to be shared through Public Works, Planning, Parks and Administration overseen by the township manager and ran through the Administrative Department as someone who can help us with our, especially deployment of new technologies, keeping up with the websites, the social media deployments, web, you know, streaming and also administering and helping out with the different activities, communication, especially getting our message out, crafting the message and disseminating the message to our community. So this was our draft that we give to you. It was amended into the budget as a salary position and I believe it's sixty-nine thousand, that's a fully loaded cost. This is what we would recommend that the board would approve and that we could go through and do the recruitment of this position early next year.
Comments on the board?
This question, whether this position is really needed. I mean, we got this far with the intern, can't we keep going with interns and not create a permanent position? I mean, actually last month, Mike truly gave us the budget report and the projection and actually said he had kept everything the same with no creating, no new positions. And I commended him on it at that point and I thought that was the way to go. Then Mr. Blanco made some positive comments about our intern and what he's done with us for the web and the, now the transfer of the streaming service. And that's all very good, but I would rather see us continue with a intern, maybe an acquisition. Don't we have a part-time person in the office right now?
We have, one of the clerks is on a memorandum, a side letter as a permanent, as a temporary position, as we will go and recruit for the full-time for the finance clerk. And that was an agreement made with the union.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is if we, I don't know that we have a full-time position in the, in this particular department or in this particular position. I would just be opposed to creating a new position in this line. That is just my call.
If I could just address one, utilizing the intern, an internship and the interns we receive are sometimes a crapshoot. Sometimes you receive quality ones, sometimes you receive adequate ones. I believe that the township, the last intern got a very quality person, however, to rely on an intern to keep maintaining our technology infrastructure, communication infrastructure may not, may not work out because that person is constantly be looking for full-time work and we may go through, and we also have the starting over when we bring new intern in to bring them up to speed to go on. So that is just one thing where internships do work well, especially as bridges, where we use this one to bridge us into the streaming. But I, you know, as the township moves forward, you know, my recommendation, I think the recommendation most of the personnel staff is that there's a full-time position, not in one department, but deployed throughout the township.
I'm okay with as far as job description, but I guess, I mean, we kind of discussed this last meeting with the budget, but I mean, as far as, did this position come about because we had the intern that has job capabilities that we're satisfied with or actual need for the position?
I think both. I think the intern, shed a light on what could be done within the township?
And what was the salary ranges given on this?
The salary range is forty-eight thousand, however, you know, the sixty-nine thousand dollar was a loaded with, it would be full family benefits, that'd be a maximum cost. This position would be publicly advertised, it's not a granted position.
I for one am okay with going out with this position and advertising for it. I think we need it as we continue to grow new technology and everything, I think this is something we need to look into.
I agree with that as well. What I do understand, we're just at the point where we possibly cover with an intern. I think Jeff makes a very valid point too, that it is a crapshoot with the intern. I think obviously technology is the way of the future and I think there's a lot to be said for continuity as we do progress down in the future and jumping intern, intern from year to year, every two years, whatever. I don't know if that would be the best option at this point.
You go ahead, I guess, go ahead and advertise for whatever, a year.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, what we would do, we would have the job description approved at the Wednesday meeting, that we would advertise once the budget is passed. Okay, the second point is a memo that I distributed on Act Forty-two of 2017 in regards to category four casinos. As you know, the state on October thirtieth, you know, the governor signed into Bill, Act into law, Act Forty-two, which allows the creation of ten category four casinos, which are casinos, mini casinos of three hundred to seven hundred and fifty slot machines and up to fifty table games. And they could be located anywhere in the state, however, if they're within twenty-five linear miles of a class one or class two casino, only the operator of the class one or class two casino can locate a class, category four in the township. I did have our planning department do a G I S spread and entire township is within twenty-five miles of Rivers Casino, so the only one, the only owner who could get a license to operate those casinos in the township would be the owners of Rivers Casino. Now, in with the act, the main caveat is that municipalities can't opt not to allow licenses to be offered in the township. If you so choose to do that, you would have to pass a resolution by December thirty-first and submit it, you know, not allowing the casinos. If you choose to allow the casinos, you don't have to take any action and the township is in play. You know, the benefit is that you do get a revenue share from the dead props at the casino that comes back. However, you know, it is up to the, but it's up to the board to allow it or not. And again, the caveat here is that the only person who could get a license for a category four in North Huntington is the owners of Rivers and probably that would be a, not a great business decision for them since North Huntington is within their pooling area. So the decision would have to be made whether to offer a resolution at the Wednesday's meeting barring category four casinos within the township.
I guess I have one question and giving my opinion. So we have to do it by December thirty-first, after then we would not be able to decide?
Yeah, you would. But the licenses go out to auction early in January, so if you miss the first one, then you can come back for another way to cherry.
Okay. I mean, it's my opinion that we go ahead and, you know, say the township is casino-free and not be open for business per se.
I all agree with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Hope by Walmart, seems everybody else wants to go there.
I don't necessarily agree, I think we ought to just let it go and let business take its natural course. Whether, you know, whether you brought one here or not, I would leave it up to the business. I agree with you, there's probably not a lot of room to have one, so it may not be an issue, but I don't know that I wouldn't want to prohibit them from doing that.
Consensus is to draft a resolution for consideration? Yeah, we solicitor dropped a resolution. Okay, next on my discussion item is Act One Seventy-two, which for those of you who don't know, is a tax rebate for volunteer firefighters and EMS. This came eligible in the end of 2016 by Act One Seventy-two, the state legislature, legislature to allow municipalities to offer up to twenty percent real estate tax rebates and a fixed rate rebate on earned income tax on the municipal portion only to active volunteer firefighters and volunteer EMS workers. I did brief this through, through a memo, it's a little bit of an arduous process because for this to be passed, it has to be passed by ordinance, but the ordinance has to be published for at least thirty days prior to adoption, then a public hearing has to be held prior to adoption. So that process goes through that way and then annually, the Board of Commissioners will pass a resolution in conjunction with the fire chiefs and EMS chiefs of the area outlining what the standard is going to be to certify for an active volunteer firefighter and a volunteer EMS worker to be eligible to get the rebate. Then the rebate sets through, you pay your taxes, you get a rebate form, the real estate, bring it back to the township manager, it's processed through there, goes that way. The E I T, you get, you become certified, you get a certificate and that is then put on as you file your E I T form, there will be a slot, you know, a block on your form to give you that rebate. So that, it's, it's a long process, it basically works a year, you know, in a rears, but you know, what is, you have to be comfortable on your taxes, you have to, one, have E I T to get any E I T rebate. So if the board chooses to give a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar flat E I T rebate and somebody only has a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars of earned income tax taken out, they get a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, they don't get two-fifty, there's no bonus money given, it's up to that maximum. And if the board so chooses, this could be done, if it's approved, to move on in the next voting meeting, probably for adoption at the February meeting to be done. But the two caveats that would have to be made is, one, is the twenty, if you want to go with the twenty percent maximum real estate, that is my statute, you can go up to twenty percent of the real estate rebate, then you have to come up with a fixed E I T rebate, which, you know, I would recommend somewhere between two-hundred-and-fifty and five-hundred dollars per person. What this does, and that serves as a recruitment tool and retention tool for volunteer fire and EMS to hopefully offset some of the training costs, fundraising, time costs, everything that's involved in being an active emergency responder in a local township.
Any comments?
Well, I for one, I know we're out of control of being volunteers at the fire departments. I see who comes up during daylight or, I know people have jobs and everything, but I think anything we can do to pull some people into the volunteer fire departments is a good thing.
I have, I have to agree.
I totally agree. I think it's a good thing to have people look at this and say, we appreciate our firefighters and EMS workers and give them a little tax break, especially for all the time they spend away from them.
I have a question for the solicitor. So being that some of us on the board here are involved with the fire departments, should we just step back from this one or offer our opinion or how do you see that?
They're asking if there's a conflict with it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's all. I think that's something that's just research report next. When you vote on it, certainly this discussion after the vote is just that discussion. So I don't see any reason why you can't offer your opinion. If you ask me next week whether you could vote on it, that might be a different answer. I mean, that's the best I can tell you.
Okay, understood.
So I think if you want to discuss, there's certainly no violation of any.
Okay. So just, we're all current, so if we adopt your orders, then, because I know the fire chiefs also present some criteria in order for active individuals to be eligible for this, it's just not, you just don't join the fire department and ban your eligibility for it. So that, that criteria will be adopted in a resolution yearly?
Yes, yeah, yes.
What recommendations from the chiefs and EMS supervisors?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure we're tracking.
It'll be part of your November meetings going forward. I guess in preparation, is there a number for E I T that you'd like to have put in the ordinance or discuss a little bit more and come back on Wednesday or?
I think two-fifty would be fine.
I'm fine with that. And getting on barrels then, I mean, there's quite a few of us here.
That's what I was getting at.
I personally don't feel that, I would be eligible for it because I don't go out and fight fires, so, and I've read the requirements.
Right, right.
But probably two.
Two.
Just two of you.
Yeah, Daryl, myself.
Not a set of us, right. Just so we have that out in the open.
Yeah. I don't want to, to get past the bridge, first, so on.
Again, I guess going back to Daryl's question, maybe you can run that by Bruce?
I'll take that back.
You take that.
We haven't done.
And get information from him.
I'm already finalizing back this one that is regardless. What the answer is, it's safer that way, I think.
Yeah, because some, I mean, I know Richie's a, like, Zach.
Can you speak? Not one hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get that prepared. And I have one other item that, oh, sorry. Number four is any final discussions on the 2018 budget. We've had the meetings, you know, the revisions were made and presented to you, it has been published for the 20-day inspection and it's going to be published for adoption at the, it's been, the 10-day notice has gone out for adoption at the 20th meeting. Is there any other points to the chair that you want at this time, or are you fine with what was presented and what was reviewed?
I guess last minute I expressed some of my concerns. By my normal current concerns, I'll bring up my normal concern about the duplication of services with our 911 dispatch. I think that's an area of opportunity for some cost savings and I'll stay on that communication as long as I'm on the board. I just have a hard time of paying something. I know all the staff down there does a great job, it's just I have a hard time asking residents to pay for service twice before you utilize Westmoreland 911 and not have a local dispatcher in the township. And then beginning with disposition, you know, we keep adding expenditures to the budget, adding more road paving, which I've been supportive since I've been on board of paving more roads. But that's a one-time cost. Hiring more staff, we get every year and that, that number doesn't go away. If anything, we add another one next year because we need one next year for something else, another special project. There's nothing against the employee, but if we don't look at ways to start saving money in areas to start saving money, we'll be coming to the residents saying, we need to raise your taxes because we got five more employees than we didn't have a few years ago. So just something to look at. Pretty consistent on my messaging, on looking at the budget. I mean, by all means, I think we need investment in the structure, things on the township, but when it comes to hiring more staff, needs to be a more of a difficult decision. We just don't say, yeah, we need it, we should hire the person. So that's just what I got to say about the budget.
There you go.
I'll just say that I agree.
Okay, one final item that is not listed on the agenda, but I did distribute it. This afternoon Valerie Morton, the borough manager of Irwin, did stop by with a letter. They are currently losing their code enforcement officer and their building inspector simultaneously, and they do have a few commercial projects in process that they don't want to lose momentum. And they've asked if we could accommodate by coming up with an agreement, an intergovernmental cooperation agreement to utilize, allow them to utilize our building inspector code enforcement officers at a hourly rate to get them through the recruitment process. And we did meet today, Andy Blank was at the meeting, and what we've offered, you know, for more consideration is that we, we could do this for a 90-day period simply because our building codes and enforcement right now are in the law period with winter. You know, we could help them out on an hourly basis, and we're probably looking at about a $45 an hour rate, which would be our loaded employee rate with a little bit of administrative cost in it. So, and we would recommend to the board to do this for 90 days. We could have Bruce draft up an intergovernmental cooperation agreement that we could have executed and provide help to our neighbors if the board so chooses, and it would not adversely impact our operations for the next three months since, again, we are in one of our law periods for building and code enforcement.
I'm okay with it as long as we're covering our costs. I mean, as long as we're not subsidizing in any way, I think we're okay.
And our rate does cover 100% of our costs. And also there'd be mileage, any consumables, it's a time of material contract.
The only concern I'd have was, is there any type of liability issue? They go down there, they look at the building, say everything's good, and next week the building falls down.
Most likely, you know, we could address that with, through our cooperation agreement that would be on their insurance, you know, we can get with Bruce to, you know, craft up an agreement that would be in our favor.
I think the way to handle that is you would have Irwin tend to buy your employees from injury and liability and make sure that they add them to their insurance. Or it's for like workman's comp and every, we could, we could put that in the agreement.
I would, as long as that's in the agreement.
That's all I had to discuss today. Thank you, Mary.
Next item on the agenda is planning and engineering copies, Mr. Blank.
The topic for discussion tonight is the rezoning of 30 acres on Itnar Road. And you've been presented with information on this before. We had a public hearing in the last month's meeting, we had a public hearing at tonight's meeting. A zoning ordinance, a rezoning request is handled under section 904 of zoning ordinance. And it requires that after a public hearing has been advertised and held, that the Board of Commissioners needs to render a decision on the request within 45 days of the public hearing. In that, the advertised public hearing was before last month's work session, a decision needs to be made this month. I would propose that this be placed on the agenda for next week. A rezoning can only be done by ordinance, it cannot be done by resolution, so that ordinance would have to be drafted and advertised. But in essence, if you give Jeff and I the direction to prepare an advertising ordinance, what you're saying is you're in favor of the rezoning. I think that would meet the required 45-day timeframe. There would be no sense in preparing an advertising ordinance if you weren't in favor of doing the rezoning, but obviously the ordinance itself would have to be adopted. You've heard a lot of comments tonight, some of which I think were perhaps misstatements of some of the facts. There's a total of 40 dwellings that are proposed on 30 acres. That would work out to be 20 side-by-side units, building units or carriage unit, depending on the terminology you like. The property is currently zoned R3. The original request was around 27 acres, but that would have required variance because the zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 30 acres for a PRD. So what the developer did was to go back and rearrange some property lines so that he met the 30-acre minimum requirement. In terms of density, the term was used that this is high-density housing. Maybe you want to call it that, I think the term that's used more often these days is low-impact housing because what you're doing is concentrating the homes to leave more of the site undeveloped, untouched, so that you have less disruption, less disturbance of trees, grain, et cetera. In the R3 zoning district, you need a minimum 100-foot frontage for each lot. Based on the frontage on Barnes Lake Road and Itnar Road, there could be 20 to 22 homes on individual single-family home lots. Based on the acreage of 30 acres with a hackbiker lot, and you wouldn't use every last square foot of ground for lots because you're going to have to put in some roads, but you could conceivably do somewhere probably 55 single-family lots on that if you gave no consideration to topography or well and areas, just looking at a broad brush approach. The Planning Commission felt that this type of housing is in demand in the township, that it is not a bad thing, it creates some positives. I think one thing, we've heard a lot about the traffic and the safety on Itnar Road. I think there's a lesser likelihood of problems if all of this traffic is coming out at one designed intersection onto Itnar rather than 20 individual driveways. The entrance road has been laid out so that there's proper sight distance, you can see that here. I think there's some benefits to that rather than to trying to have a bunch of individual driveways if you had individual homes. It's not likely that there would be a lot of internal roads in this plan just because of the topography. But the developer, Mr. Pasquarelli, is here tonight. He would be happy to answer any questions. He may have a presentation he would like to make on his own. This is your time to ask questions and gather information because last month's public hearing, that was really the public's time to voice their concerns. You didn't really do a whole lot of inquiring or asking questions. Tonight is your night to try and find out any answers that you may have about this. And then I think we need to put this on the agenda next week to satisfy our time constraint. So what I have on the board is a, an overview, a colorized overview of the plan as proposed. And Mr. Pasquarelli is here. I will leave it up to him if he would like to add anything to my introductory comments.
An auto Pasquarelli 1300, one of the courts in Woodbridge Estates. Could you bring up the water line on Itnar Road?
I just want to make some corrections. Last meeting, we had a gentleman here, he stated that all of Itnar Road had a water line. There's a gap in the water line, there's a gap in the water line. So we really would appreciate if anybody uses my name to state the facts, not just come out and grab anything out of midair. The other thing, gentleman last week, he said that there were four gas wells on a property, there's two gas wells on the property. The other thing, Andy, you brought it up, that there's 40 homes down in the plan. The gentleman stated again, there's 44 homes. Another thing too is, somebody come up earlier, they stated that this type of home is going to bring in the undesirables. But the average price of a home last year, we talked about it, last meeting, was, I believe, $190,000. These houses are going to start at 350, and it's almost like an insult to the citizens that are paying under 350,000, like they're undesirables. I just felt bad about hearing that from this local citizen here. The other thing I want to talk about is, Andy, can you bring up the sources and the source extension? Okay, there you go. We have here is, which shows, and the existing source that would be right on Itnar property on Lot 112, at the bottom where it starts. Right, which shows 1,300 feet sanitary sword to reach Itnar. I'll probably bring it up and profit up to there. I just have a question, is there anybody in the audience that'll be able to benefit from the sore line extension? Bishop raising hands. I see one. Well, the gentleman last week, he come up and he said, what's Pasquarelli going to do? What's Pasquarelli going to do? There's one person here that's going to benefit from the sore line, at least one. If you look at the map over there, it runs 3,200 linear feet parallel to Barnes Lake Road and it goes all the way up to Norwin Christian Church. So I'm sure there's going to be more than one person that want to tap into that sore line. Last week I had a meeting on another subject about Tuscan Hills with Mike Rander. I said, Mike, why isn't there source up there? I didn't mention, we didn't go into detail here. He says, because it's too expensive, we couldn't have done it. If you look on Little Itnar, I had a Danny Diffenderfer who couldn't make this meeting, he's been looking since 1980, he gets source over here. So this will benefit people. Again, say like, Pasquarelli.
Mr. Pasquarelli, could you direct your comments to the board, please?
Yes, I appreciate that. The reason why I turned around last meeting, nobody said that to this gentleman here, when he looked me right in the eyes, he said the same thing. That's why I turn my attention to him. I don't know if they're trying to intimidate me. That's why I turn around and hear right back. Understood. Sorry.
I'll address those issues if you like.
Pardon?
If you'd like to address those.
Oh, Mr. President, if you'd like.
This is your call.
All right, so, back to our, the very first meeting we had here and the second meeting, the very first meeting, the complaints, we tried to address all the complaints here. One of them being is you have to move the entranceway, which we did. Now, right now, presently, the entranceway stands 575 feet from Barnes Lake Road. So we took care of that, so to me, that's a check, we could clear that problem from the local citizens. Next thing is they were concerned about how the community building, that'll bring in that element. Man, that would be a good thing for a community. You get, tend to get older people in these communities, and people pass away, they're lonely. I mean, you go to McDonald's, you see a bunch of guys standing there, people like to go dump the dome to there. I thought this would be a good thing. Not on a selling point, I'm getting phone calls already, not even advertising, it's the people are interested. I thought it'd be a good thing, again, for the people living there. So we removed that, so check, that's gone, took care of another one of their headaches. And the other thing they have, he stated that it's difficult driving on the Barnes Lake Road. One gentleman, the very first meeting, he said, it took me five minutes to get on the Barnes Lake Road. Okay, Andy, could you please tell the audience here, the traffic light that I'm going to install on Hontown Road and Barnes Lake Road, is it going to help the traffic flow?
What that traffic light will do is allow a platoon, I believe is the traffic engineer's word, of vehicles to move through the intersection at one time. So there's going to be a period of steady flow and then a period of a break in between cycles of the light. That light is going to happen sometime in 2018. I guess PennDOT's finally signed off on the permit, everything is up to stuff, the family is just a matter of getting the bond in place and getting the equipment ordered. So I would expect construction on that to begin sometime, possibly April, in the spring.
So would that help traffic flow from Itnar Road onto Barnes Lake Road with the traffic?
It will give periods of no traffic in during which people can pull out and pull in. I've seen that intersection on, particularly Friday afternoons for whatever reason, and traffic's packed up a quarter mile in both directions.
I agree with you there. So this traffic light will help.
I believe it will, yes.
So then there's another check. Now, another thing the local citizens said, they said Itnar Road is filled with potholes, hairpin turns, drainage problems, road goes from two lanes to one and a half lanes. You know what, I agree with them. That, that is a treacherous road. My driveway is going to go 575 feet to Barnes Lake Road. To take care of that check mark there, what I want to propose is to put a pork chop left. That's not a giant pork chop, but Andy, could you please tell the audience what a pork chop left is?
That is a, an island that would restrict traffic to coming in or going out in a certain direction only. Typically, you see them, PennDOT's requiring them more and more on new projects along Route 30 where it's a right in, right out. You can't make a left turn coming out, you can't make a left turn across traffic to come in. And it's done by restricting movement with a raised concrete island.
There is a pork chop right at the end of Perrigan Drive, right off the Barnes Lake Road. Again, it forces you to go that long way, which as far as I'm concerned, that's not a check, we took care of that problem. All the problems they brought up, we checked. The other thing to do with this, this development here, I agree where I'd like to see green space around the whole development there. I'd like to see the green space there between Hannahoff Drive and these duplex homes for happier homes. Like one gentleman here said, he doesn't want to steer to, steer to Coltsap. I'd rather steer to Coltsap with a 50-foot buffer as opposed to no buffer and steering somebody's swamp pool. And the other thing too, what I found out in North Huntington, we have 31,000 citizens, is that about right? What do we have, like one duplex development, I think, Buena Vista? Would that be the only one or is there any more? Would that be the only one or is there any more?
There's, what I was saying, there is Brookhaven Phase 4, and there is a section of Lincoln Hills that has it. There's also a short street in Willow Estates that has maybe 10 or 12 units.
Now, for 31,000 people, my opinion is that we need more housing for people over 50. Come today will come when we have to downsize. Unless you're already set up for it, you have a single, you have a one, four home with a brother masturbating on the first floor. I've been living in a township, my wife and I, for 27 years. We have a son, two daughters, they're all married. We have eight grand children, six of them live, two minutes from us. If it wasn't for that, my wife and I, where we could build the house the way we want. But by the way, my house is a seven, four masturbating. But anyways, I would have to, if I look around...
Excuse me, the other one too I forgot is Redstone Island. Redstone Island has done that in two phases. They have one phase up that's 40-some units in there, a second phase.
I thought about what you had, but I'm thinking more like a Buena Vista type of thing. But anyways, the time comes, like, people like me who want to downsize, where are they going to go? I want to be by my family. There's nothing like my family, especially my grandkids. So if there's not enough product out there, why is it Greensburg, Mennoville? So I believe something like this, on the right way, will work, will be beneficial. That's all I got to say on.
Just one point of clarification. So if you're leaving the development, which I guess you called it a pork chop, but turn, you won't be able to turn left out of the development?
You're forced to turn left, not right.
Okay.
This way it takes care of everybody's problems, how dangerous it is, and what is other stuff going on.
That's one thing I did want to bring up, and I think you brought it up, and it was my understanding, obviously, you're not far away from Barnes Lake, so traffic actually traveling down Itnar, I think there might be one or two residents that cars may pass that normally might not see a car coming from, just because it's undeveloped, but most residents live further down Itnar, they're not going to see the traffic, other than when they're leaving Itnar to get onto Barnes Lake.
Any concerns on the board?
There was concern about one of your roads intersecting or joining Hemlock, I guess?
That's just a rumor.
Right me?
That's just a rumor.
But that's not going to...
What you still appear is exactly what we're looking at, nothing else other than that. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't want this to happen. They want this to always be green space, which is great. The property was for sale for, I guess, five years or so. I bought a year and a half of it. I mean, it had a for-sale site on Itnar Road, one on Barnes Lake Road. If these folks like really, really loved the property, one guy here, there's one guy here, they're business people, business savvy, buy their property once for sale. All of a sudden, they all show up, this, that, and the other thing.
Any other questions, Mr. President?
Andy, I have a question. So the green area that showed up around all that, is that, that's all 30 acres?
What was done there from the original proposal, in order to meet 30 acres, some of this area down here, which is future Woodridge Estates, was taken from Woodridge Estates and added to this shape to make a total of 30 acres.
Okay, so the area that shows the development, just the development, the road and the homes?
This?
Yes. How much we talk for?
I could do some calculations. I don't know off the top of my head. The original piece that included this was about 27 acres. If I remember right, Dan, maybe it was one of these about six acres and one of these was?
One and a half.
Three or four?
I think one and a half and six, I believe it was.
Okay.
Come on.
So it'll be about 19 acres, 20 acres, or just this piece here.
So we're talking about, so it needs 30 acres to meet the requirement to apply for rezoning?
No, 30 acres for a PRD.
For a PRD. But in essence, we're squeezing this into 19 acres.
Well, that's the whole point of a PRD, though. The idea of a PRD is that you won't exceed the underlying or overlying density of the zoning district. So with an R3 district, which is this, you have to have half-acre lots, minimum 100-foot of road frontage. The idea behind a PRD is that you leave some of that undisturbed, cluster your housing, so you have less public roads, less impervious area, less grading, less disturbance, and in exchange, you have tighter homes, less setback distances between them. And this is, it seems to be a trend. It's taken off more in other areas around North Highland than it has here, but people, when they get up in years, they don't want to be out cutting a half acre of grass.
Understood.
So it gives them a smaller, more compact community with fringe areas. It's the whole idea of the PRD. It gives a developer flexibility to exceed density and decrease setbacks in exchange for undisturbed areas typically around the fringes.
Okay, got it.
Andy, I have a question. That other, what is it, left 19 acres or 11 acres? There's 19 that's going to be used. The other is 11 acres?
What was proposed was that this would be a single-family estate lot, this would be a single-family estate lot, this would be undisturbed ground now, I guess. This would be stormwater management, and this would be undisturbed ground.
Okay, so you're talking 40 plus two single families. It could be developed in that area.
Forty plus two flat ones.
Okay.
So, all right, Mr. Pasquarelli, so I do appreciate all of your efforts on what you have done here and what the people asked for, with the changes and the concerns. I understand PRD is probably the way of the future. I get that. I'm just not sure this is the best place for it. That's my opinion, and that's where I'm going, and that's the way I feel. So I might guess develop, develop in it, I just don't know if PRD is the best option for this area. And that's just my opinion, and I'm just putting it out there so everybody knows where I'm coming from.
Any others have any concerns on it? Put it on the agenda for next week to vote on the rezoning request. Thank you, Mr. President. Our next item on the agenda is further board comments.
I have a couple. I think our gentleman from EPD left, is that right?
Yes.
Unfortunately, I should have brought these up earlier about the comprehensive park and recreation plan update. There's three items. Number one is, I know Mr. Fasenda had said something about private-public partnerships, and we don't know the answer to that. And actually, I think the presenter actually alluded to the fact that we do know the answer to that, that they're very unique, I think is the word he used. They just don't happen very often. So to bank on some kind of partnership like that, or advertising through layers, things of that nature, it's just not a realistic funding mechanism for the types of things that this plan calls for. As far as the recreation center goes, Andy, didn't we just get a notice this week about zoning hearing board decision? I think it was, was it Moreland Soccer that had requested a clarification on open space?
Correct. They asked for an interpretation of the open space zoning district, which governs the property they own up between the old Ocala IMCA and Ocala Park.
And the reason they did that is because?
What they stated in their application, they would like to go to 15,000 square foot indoor soccer field center.
I think somewhere in that, I read that there was, I mean, they referred to it as a recreation center that might have other amenities besides just the soccer. So, I mean, that's the kind of private partnership I would like to see where it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything with these private organizations. The other thing is the swimming pool and splash bath, splashport. When we put the referendum on the ballot some years ago to build a recreation center that was shot down by about 69.5% of the people, I realized that they're referring to a more realistic, maybe complex. But I can say from firsthand experience that a swimming pool in this area, in fact, when we put the referendum on the ballot some years ago, I actually spent a lot of time talking with DCNR people, and they laughed and said, "Yeah, a swimming pool in this area is a community service. It will never pay for itself." So we agreed on that, and I can tell you from firsthand experience, having been in the swimming pool operation business for many years over at the former Colonial Manor, that it is a, it is not a profitable business in this area. So there again, I don't want to see something like that fall upon the taxpayers. If there's somebody that, like the school district that has a swimming pool, that we could work some kind of arrangement, we've talked about that many times, to gain more access to it, and that's the way to go. But I think some of the ideas voted in this, in this plan are somewhat unrealistic, and the board needs to stand up to them at some point. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Will you, excuse me, if I can add some commentary to that?
As long as it doesn't refute what I said. Whatever you want, whatever.
The breadth of this, because there's so many parks and so many things, you can see at the comprehensive plan level, it can be a little bewildering. There's cost issues. Where does this go? What do you need to support the master? There's so many elements to this that our discussion is that we need to come back, probably for the first quarter of this year. The logical thing to do would be come back to you with some, the priorities are just sort of laid out in a comp plan manner, but what really needs to happen is to really fine-tune those. What years are you going to do what? We did some rough numbers. Now, these are, they're not pulled out of a hat, but they're not really design numbers. If you did all the priorities, you're going to be $3 million to $5 million worth of improvements, maybe closer to five, but you don't have to do all of those. So you can pick if you don't want to do the full. If you don't want to do the full, maybe you want, what do you do first? You're going to do the master planning first, probably, but how is this going to work? That all should be laid out in a little more detail. But the finance part of it is a big question. I mean, there's a lot of options. If you're talking about, let's say you chose the lower end of that, $3 million, if you do that over 10 years, then you can see you need about $300,000 a year. If you're at the $5 million range, you need about 15 years to do it. But you could do it over, you know, through, you can over a less period of time, it's going to be more money. You can do the numbers, but you could, you could borrow some money, maybe something that you want to borrow some. That's an option. Maybe you don't like it. Maybe you could borrow some, some little money. But the whole financing of it and the detailed planning of it is something that I think we should bring back to you as like a follow-up, is what would be the priorities? How would we arrange things? We can't do multiple $300,000 items in one or two years. It's going to take a period of time. But if you want to do it over a shorter period of time, you may have to borrow, you may have to look at other options. I think we should consider laying out those various options to you with this likelihood of cost in rough numbers. Maybe you want to look at a paradigm to a lesser number. Maybe you want to borrow some money and move ahead. How fast do you want to get it done? Would you like it done in five to 10 years? Is 12, 10 to 15 a better? So all these questions aren't really answered in a comp plan. It's just, like you said, we're operating at this level. So this is, I think, the logical exercise now for us to try to bring back to you decisions on the finances and the priorities, what should be done in 2020, 2019, and so forth.
I would just like to say that as far as the finances go, I think the creation of any facility is a mere pittance compared to the ongoing operation. And I hope that whatever you bring back to this board will have operational costs factored into it, because you could get a free facility if somebody else paid for it, but then the taxpayers are going to pay for the operation, maintenance, the longevity of it for 20, 30, 40 years, maybe forever. So I think that has to be well noted in whatever you bring back to the next board.
And you have the other comment on the rec center, is there's been some discussions and there's going to be some coordination, what exactly is being proposed, how would it affect other things we might do in that area by Ocala and whatnot. So that's, that's all been discussed. And maybe just operating at the comprehensive plan level is really just outlining what is the general priorities and a park needs and a community part of it. It's not really getting involved with the detailed master planning and some of the, it's just complicated because if there was one park, it might be much simpler. Certainly, you could upgrade one or two parks, but when you have as many as we have and such different types of parks, it becomes, and so many different needs, it becomes a lot more complicated. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I mean, I kind of already sent my comments with it, since we brought it up again. When we were doing that thing too, obviously, I know Dan was involved, obviously, greatly with this whole process, but to kind of see the current state of our parks now, and then we need to see even something as simple as parking, restroom facilities, even updating those things at our current park level now, before we even try to improve on maybe lights or better ball fields. Obviously, that would be more of a, more, you know, deeper dive than what, you know, a mile-high view, but obviously, you guys will get some back to us on that.
You know, when you bring up the ball fields, I took a look around the township. There's ball fields that, I attended both of these meetings, and the big complaint was there was a group that wanted more ball fields. Well, there's ball fields that are abandoned, that nobody even uses. Look and see what the existing resources we have already. Then go from there. Don't come nostalgic saying, "I'll be much here to build us six ball fields," when there's ball fields out there that aren't being used. That's how I can think of.
Any other? If not, any more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Discussion, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
A vote. I have a meeting adjourned at 8:47. We'll have an executive session afterwards for personnel discussion.